With the pledge of allegiance, if we'd all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everyone. Before we get into our agenda, we'll start with a public hearing on the transfer of funds to the flexibility account here at 5:30.
A couple of years ago, there was a House File 565, which established the flexibility fund, which was, really gave school districts some local control of some of their categorical, categorical findings. We aren't, we're just looking at one, one specific categorical fund, the homeschool assistance program. We use those dollars to, it's a per pupil amount, it's how you get it. We pay our homeschool coordinator stipend with it. We cover any necessary expenses and we still have a balance of just under forty thousand dollars. So I recommend that we transfer twenty-five thousand of that and we'll use that to pay for differential pay for teacher associates, which if you remember, we, that was something we negotiated. If they work with a level-two student, they get an extra quarter. If they work with a level-three student, they get an extra fifty cents. So this, that, this will cover that additional expense. So just a public hearing for this now, action later in the meeting.
Brent, what other expenses besides paying the homeschool coordinator do you see from the district?
Not much. Maybe some administration of some assessments, some stuff like that, maybe some materials that they requested or resources, which isn't very common, but...
Yeah, I mean, two of my kids are homeschooled and one's dueling role, one's homeschooled and two are in the district, but it's just like, I don't know what...
We, homeschool families in our district do not ask a lot of the district. There's little expenses. Yeah, we do pay for some assessment stuff, yeah.
Good questions. Any other? All right, hearing done. We'll close this public hearing here. All right, we'll move into the regular agenda. Seeing we have enough here for, for vote. Hearing delegation's done. We need to approve the agenda. So moved. Thank you, Todd. Do we have a second? All right, thanks, Brent. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Agenda approved. Seeing no communications to the board, we'll move into the consent items, which you should have received with your board packet, and then also maybe a few other invoices in front of you here.
I will highlight the cash and bank document. Looks like this. Let's see, we have 2.8 million in there in July, '25, '26, and 4.1 last year. So when first looking at this, that's a concern, right? That's a big change. However, when I look at the same document from a year ago, this number in '24, '25 is actually 2.5 million. So this, this occurs because of some GAAP accounting and how we pay teachers throughout the summer. So not a concern. It's just how it shows up when we reconcile at the end of July. So this number is actually three hundred thousand more this year than it was last year. So we're, we are where we anticipated to be.
All right.
Looking at invoices, a huddle subscription, sixteen thousand dollars.
For the huddle subscription, yeah. Does Booster Club fund that?
Sometimes they go and they do it, but we always pay for it and then they don't.
I think the Booster Club ends up covering it, but it's expensive.
For software.
For software.
We have a lot of them.
Yeah.
And I think, I think ultimately, because I've been part of districts as a huddle subscription for probably almost fifteen years, what's changed is the storage. You know, nothing is stored locally anymore. It's all stored on their stuff. And that's when the expenses start to be a little...
Our management fund is only eighty-four thousand dollars. Is that pretty typical? It seems pretty low.
At this time, I think it would be yes, because we just paid our property liability, all that, which was five, six hundred thousand, five, five something.
Well, we currently tax for and management we spend, which is good. I think that's appropriate use. So, you know, we just ended the taxes, tax year now. It'll build back up.
We'll get big payments October and April.
Motion to approve consent items.
Thanks, Brent. Do we have a second?
Second to the motion.
Thanks, Tom. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Consent items approved. We'll move into your report, Joe.
First thing, some staffing reports. We're still in need of a few positions in the district. We've had a few teacher associate resignations here late in summer. We have, and we have a number of teacher associate hires on our agenda. So we're probably in a pretty good place with that. We have filled all of our full-time driving positions, which we weren't able to do that through all of last year. So we've made some positive steps in transportation. We also have a few subs who are lined up and ready to go. So Mr. Lane's done a great job in finding people for that department. Mr. Cecil had some conversations with a possible high school English candidate. We don't have that yet, but we're working on that still. We'll see if we're able to put that together for the start of the year. Our board retreat is scheduled for Wednesday from 4:30 to 6:30 at the Lester Farm. On our agenda, we have the cell phone policy. We have the activity passes for all students topic, facilities updates where we're at and our future, a financial review for the district, and then some information on the IASB convention. New teachers will be in the district on Wednesday. We'll have new teachers in on Wednesday and Thursday. We also brought in our new teachers in June, but we believe bringing them in in June, you know, we get them their computers, we get them their keys, we get them their passwords. We make it so when they get here Wednesday, we can really just get started. All staff will be here.
How many new teachers are this year?
I was gonna say six.
Yeah, it sounds...
Six.
Six new, six that were TAs that became teachers.
Okay.
Yeah.
So twelve total?
Three and three, I'm sorry.
Oh, three and three.
Six total new teachers. August 18th, we'll have all staff. We'll begin that day with an all-staff welcome and breakfast. Tahr and their chefs will be on hand for breakfast that day. And I'll get the group started. We'll have professional development and work time on Monday through Thursday, 18th through 21st. And on Thursday at 8:30, we'll have Brian Mendler here to speak in the PAC at 8:30. I would invite you guys, if you're interested, to come see Brian. He's gonna give a great message on kicking off our school year and then also working with students. Grades five through 12 will start on August 25th with K-4 beginning August 26th. So we're gearing up. Principals were in this last week. We met a number of times. Finish up some of our training with our new teachers this week before we have everyone in next week.
Moving forward, a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Any questions for Joe? All right, we'll move on to old business and we've got to approve the second reading to board policy.
Second reading, so we do have action. Same recommendations as we had in July. Board policy 206-2, the vice president, we need to update the first paragraph to the, to match the IASB recommendation. We have some updated languages to board policies, 209-1, development of policy, and 209-2, adopt, adoption of policy. And then we need to update our language of dissemination of policy due to technology and online posting for board policy 209-3.
All right, if you had a chance to review those, we need a motion then for approval.
Make a motion to approve the updates for...
Thanks, Todd. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Brent. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Second reading to board policy approved. New business, we're looking at some first readings.
First reading, still staying in the 200 series. First change would be in 210-06, the quorum. Need to update our language to define a quorum and encourage attendance as per IASB language recommendations. Also need to update language for the process of posting and creating the agenda in line with the IASB recommendations for board policy 210-8. That is it. Those are the changes.
Please take a few moments, look over those changes, and we'll look to approve next month.
I think what's nice about a seven-member board is that, like, I mean, we're all here the majority of the time, but it's nice that it gives us flexibility to not be here and still have a quorum. If we had three or five, it'd be tough.
We could get four.
Seven-person board, I think, is nice. I think that is a struggle in a five-person board. Make sure you have better people there for the quorum.
Sure does. That's true. All right, moving forward, this is where we look to approve that resolution for transfer categorical funds.
So again, kind of reiterating what we said in the public hearing, there's a House File that gave local control over some categorical funds. So you can make the decision as a district to transfer some of those categorical funds to your general fund. And we have a number of categorical funds. And some you can just, you can just do that, that move, but this one requires a public hearing and board approval to move our homeschool assistance dollars. Again, we pay our homeschool coordinator stipend and all necessary expenses, but we still have almost a forty thousand dollar balance. So we want to transfer twenty-five thousand of that, and specifically, those dollars will be used to pay the differential pay for teacher associates that we approved for this year. And we need a roll call.
Yep, we'll need a roll call. First of all, we need a motion then to approve in the resolution directing...
A motion to approve the resolution.
Thank you. Brent, do we have a second?
Second to the motion.
Thanks, Tom. We have a motion and a second. Lisa, we'll move into the vote.
And just to clarify, I mean, when money goes to the general fund, we could always spend it if we needed to out of the general fund.
Sure.
Back anything.
What move, what this move does is allows us to spend it on something other.
Rather than just sitting there and not doing anything, right?
Davis?
Yes.
Limbaugh?
Yes.
Zalagi?
Yes.
Mitchell is absent. Newt?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
And Dancy?
Yes.
All right, resolution approved. All right, going into, looking at some sharing agreements.
We have four sharing agreements in, in the, in the action item. I'll talk about all four of those, though. First of all, girls' swimming. We've had girls' swimming sharing agreements with Bishop Garrigan, Emmitsburg, and Esterville for a number of years. Most recently, if Emmitsburg and Esterville have swimmers, which they haven't of late, but sharing agreement with all of those. We administer that program. We would continue to administer that program. Boys' swimming agreement, this is year two of this agreement and year two of this program. Sharing just with Bishop Garrigan, as we did last year. Garrigan would continue to administer that program. Girls' wrestling with Bishop Garrigan, as we have in the past, and boys' wrestling with Bishop Garrigan, as we have had in the past.
What happened on the state level with the bill that was proposed or up for debate about public schools? This not even being a point that they would have to allow private schools to come if the private school didn't offer...
So legislation did pass that says if a non-public doesn't have a program, then they are allowed to compete on the resident districts and resident students program. For example, wrestling, Garrigan doesn't have that, so they, they are allowed to wrestle on ours. That legislation did pass.
So why do we have to vote on it?
There could be some, some hangups if you did that. One being if one of the Garrigan students wasn't a resident, then they couldn't wrestle. So it could mean that some Garrigan kids could wrestle here and some couldn't.
Some have to go to Emmitsburg and some would have to go to West Hancock, remember that?
Depending on where their residency, okay.
All of our coaches support these programs, support them, support these agreements and support these sharing agreements. Brent brings up a good point. There was legislation that, that says a resident student who goes to non-public would get to wrestle here anyway.
Make a motion to approve the, we just do it all as one or do we do each one individually?
Just one.
To approve the sharing agreements.
I'll second those.
All right. Thanks, Todd. Thanks, Jay. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
I will discuss, because this has been, I've brought this up before individually. I know it's not a popular point. I'm not gonna be a fan for the Bishop Garrigan families, but I do think if our coaches support this, that when the numbers, because we're bringing in other kids, need to find ways to create more opportunities for our kids, because I do see it taking away opportunities for the outgoing kids when the numbers fit. Like, for instance, our boys' program has been large the last couple of years, and kids just aren't getting opportunities to compete or matches, you know, when we have more kids coming over. So...
I, I agree with you, Brent. It's, it's a challenge in wrestling specifically to find, I would say like a varsity-level competition if you're not the varsity wrestler, you know, because you can't, can't have two guys in the, in the tournament, right? You're not gonna, most of the night, you're not gonna run two guys at the same weight out in a, in a duel. So it is, it's tough. We've had a few examples where we've went, we've split and went two ways. I think exploring those opportunities is valuable.
But it's hard because there's other, there's schools that don't want the B-team in their tournament and getting beat by the B-team, which is where...
Although our B-team has been, been very successful.
Which have been successful. I also think, I mean, on the state level, when legislatures start interfering, I mean, I think, I'll say, I, they need to stay out of local decisions for schools.
We've kind of said that as a board.
We prioritize in one of our legislative priorities.
It's just to our legislatures, and I know they're not watching, but I mean, just leave local decisions to local boards rather than governing from a state level. I don't think it's good for schools.
You'll see that as a top priority, I believe, by all school systems coming into the elegant assembly. But you're right, we're having less and less local control on Iowa schools.
And it's a, you know, publicly aside, parties, you see it from the conservatives, which tell, you know, this, and they're coming more from a top-down approach, which I'm disappointed in our leaders for doing that. So, and this is just an example of, of that. And I'm not saying, I mean, a lot of these boys, not so much the girls, have been part of the youth program for years. So I'd be ashamed to put an end to it. You know, I'm not suggesting that, but I just think it's just an example of taking away from local control for what's best for our kids and just from a state level saying, "You have to do this." And I'm just not a fan of it for whether it's sports or education or guidelines. I think it should be left to a local district to make those decisions.
I agree.
Thank you for those comments. Any further comments or discussion? Hearing done. We do have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sharing agreements approved. Looking at some change orders for the fieldhouse.
Yeah, a couple of things. Hopefully it's the last time we ever say change order again for a really long time. Okay, well, we can look at these. Second thing, you know, where are we at in budget? I've shared this with some of you guys in our memos, but I think it's important to talk about. When we started this process, thirteen point one million dollars is what we borrowed to complete this project. And our bid came in at twelve point seven, which is great, although we've, we've change ordered up to thirteen one. But I guess, big picture, and what I'd like to communicate is we're still within budget. And that's, that's good. That's great. We will have a substantial completion walkthrough this week. The biggest thing that comes from the substantial completion walkthrough is we will gain access to the facility as intended, once that happens. So... By the end of this week, we'll, we will access the entire facility as intended. There, there will still be stuff they're finishing and finalizing, but we, our PE classes will be on the courts. Our volleyball teams will be on the courts. We've been using the wrestling room and the weight room for a number of weeks, and then that's exciting. In the weight room this morning, remember, you could go back three years when we've outlined objectives. One of the reasons for the new weight room is we couldn't fit whole teams in our weight room. We had our nine-twelve football team in the weight room today for the first time, I don't know, since I've been here, you know. So the fifteen racks were full. We had four kids in some racks. We had five kids in some racks.
Was the, was the weight equipment as part of the thirteen point one?
No, it is not. We had that budgeted separately, yeah.
So where did that come from? Like, where did the finances come from that?
Sales tax dollars. We had, remember, about 1.5 million in sales tax that we had, not part of that, but we had budgeted for some of those types of things. Weight equipment, hurdles. Yeah, bleachers, some of those other...
What's the story with the wrestling mats? I heard they're bleeding. Is that normal? Has the company been contacted? Do you know anything about that?
About bleeding?
Bleeding. The colors are bleeding, the lines are bleeding.
I have not seen that. I was just sitting there.
Yeah, we were just in there, Brent. Haven't seen it.
But there's a problem.
Yeah, I would just maybe follow through on that. Maybe it's not a problem, but it's, my nephew's wrestled quite a bit. Was like, that's just not normal for mats to do. The colors were, like, the lines were bleeding out of the mat?
And, you know, those are rest light mats.
Yeah, it's top quality.
Yeah, that's, that's as good as there is.
So maybe Andy knows about that or has contacted him. Maybe it's not that big a deal, but...
Yep, we'll look into it. Our change orders. Change order 53. We have to add a furtile wall to the south wall of the team room. If you remember, the, the team room and the middle school room kind of switched locations after design was done. So this is to furtile out the south wall of the high school classroom. Total amount of the change orders, six thousand, two hundred ninety-seven dollars, recommended by our architects to do that. Change order 54, the lintel added to the doorway. So there, we could cut a doorway out of the old weight room, but they left basically the framing of the doorway out of design. It's a mistake in design. Obviously, that needs to be in there. Change order 55, the breaker for the heater and the vestibule is not large enough. Again, designed incorrectly, so we need to increase the size of the breaker. Change order 56, we approved an extension to put some lights over the view deck. Like, the location had to change and they had to, we had changed that, we approved that change order a few months ago. The contractor left out the cables, the extended cables to lower them that amount. So change order 56 is for the cables, the cords. Change order 57, again, a breaker issue. The breaker that was called for and designed for the ejector pump is not large enough designed, a mistake. And change order 58, similar. Breakers need to be added for the light fixtures and to the repurposed classrooms that were left out of design. Total amounts...
Yes, total.
Fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, those amounts would change.
We have to ask that if you question any changes, you might want to hold off on those three at fifty-one. We'll change once things are...
Okay, so we could just go with these top three, fifty-three, fifty-four, and fifty-five. So that's the furtile wall, the doorway, and the breaker for the heater. And that would be six thousand. The lintel is eight hundred. And the vestibule heater breaker. Six fifty-seven. So about eight thousand dollars is what this total changed.
It'd be nice to have a completed project.
So I will make a motion to approve those, but I'm looking forward when it's, they finish it.
Yeah. Actually, Brent, it just disappoints me that we have hired these people and paying good money, and yet you look at their, well, the first one, you know, was something we changed, left out of design, designed incorrectly, left out of the bid, not large enough, left out, you know, I mean, it just seems like there's a lot of stuff there that...
There's six, six on here. Five of these six. Well, yeah, everyone except for something we changed, the other five are all designed.
Yeah, you know, it's just like, I don't know, I just, that disappoints me that that, there's that many. And it seems like there's been quite a few others throughout the process that...
Design team's a large group. You know, Atura, you know, leads our design group, but there's electrical engineers, which is what...
Some contractors.
Yeah, these would all fall into the electrical engineers. There's civil engineers. There's a lot of groups that work for them to, to create this. And certainly, we've had some electrical design issues, as we can tell.
But I think good learning, you know, because you talk about a thirteen million dollar project versus, you know, forty, fifty million dollar project down the road.
Yeah.
Like, we can't afford to have...
Do you have to take the low bid? I mean, do we have to take the low bid based on our experience?
Can you write into the contract that it, like, design issue flaws cannot exceed X percent of the, the bid?
There's different things you can, you can write in. You know, one thing you can write in, like delays, stuff like that. Most of the architects are gonna tell you, once you do that, you just increase your, your cost. You know, there's, the bids are gonna go up ten percent.
But if you go with the lowest bid, and in this case, I think, you know, they didn't even bid it correctly, right? Which, but you're subject to their electrical contractors and that kind of stuff. Well, I guess what, if, if we learn from this, what, and I, you don't necessarily have to answer this tonight, Joe, but what kind of things can we do in the future? Because we can't afford, you know, to go, and I don't know, at the end of this, we'll, we'll figure out what the change order, design-wise, added to the budget, X percentage. But, you know, when you're talking about that on that large of a project, I mean, those are...
I mean, it's four, four percent maybe, right? I mean, if we were at twelve point six and we're at thirteen point one.
Yeah.
I mean, that's four percent of the budget.
And they say on large projects, normal contingencies at ten to twelve percent?
Yeah.
So does they make sure we're factors?
I mean, it happens and it's frustrating, but it's like, not...
Our contingencies, I don't know. But, you know, I think, I don't know if I've learned anything. I think one thing would be in the design. I don't know if we went too fast, but certainly, we didn't, we didn't have it designed to have completed piece. I think having a construction management, you know, you can hire that, and we didn't. Remember, we discussed that. Maybe that...
Well, I don't, I think it's a lot to ask some coaches, and I know you did a good job involving people, but like, people that don't have a construction background or think that way. And then also, you know, I had one coach that, you know, it's like, "I hate to complain or ask for this because we're getting so much already" that it's just like, it's like, wow, this is amazing. Like, why should I ask for anything more? Where some of the things could have been a little more functional in that. So like, but I think it's, what's best for kids is getting it done before the school year. And if we would have waited six more months, we would have missed half a school year for these kids that are senior this year and never would have got the opportunity to do it, too.
And I looked at a five to 10 percent increase, you know, that's what they were telling us at the time. So I, I agree with you. I think it was the right thing to do. Just learn from these things.
But I think on future projects, I think especially if we look at like a common elementary school, I think we need to probably plan it, get a step away for that, and then revisit with our teachers about what we actually need. And I think in this case, like, you know, talk about it ahead of time. What do you need? This is the design. Go through a, a year of what it would look like if we had this design and then revisit it, you know. I'll second Jay. Jay?
I was gonna ask, we'll need a second there, but fine, great discussion.
Very good.
You know, sometimes you just can't see those changes until it's started, too, and even you're looking at plans, but...
It's, it's frustrating, but I don't think the change orders that we've had is not, it's not been terrible.
No.
And if you build a house, I mean, think about like what you get and then how many things you end up changing. And it's, I think for us, it's a struggle because we have to be responsible with people's money. It's not our money to spend. And so then it's just like, you know, this is like, oh, eight thousand dollars, no big deal. We'll just approve it, but it's still eight thousand dollars of somebody's tax money that... But it's, at this point, it's just, we need to get it done.
And we're still in budget, so I mean, you know, I mean, but going into step-by is wide open, I think, is good.
Under budget's always better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Change orders approved. Looking at some bus bids. That were... Uh, looking at some bus bids that were, yeah.
Fundraising.
No fundraising, sorry, skipped over one.
Last month, we approved, uh, really our, our list of fundraising requests, we had two additional requests, um, that, that are valid, um, I'd ask you to consider ones for a high school volleyball team, uh, and one is for Bertha Godfrey Elementary, um, both things they've, they've done in the past, the things they need, you know, we, we are trying to not fundraise to fundraise, uh, that's a, um, point of emphasis that we've made with all, all administration, um, Bertha Godfrey's got some specific things they're trying to do, some sidewalks and areas around their building, and this fundraising fundraiser would help with that, high school volleyball teams and specific needs for some camps and, um, I think maybe some uniform stuff might have been on there, so, um, I would, I would recommend approval of these two.
All right.
I make a motion to approve the additional fundraising.
Thanks Andrea, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks Todd, do you have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
I will say, I'll just bring up, I got a call and I'm not gonna get into specifics, Joe, I talked to you about it, fundraising against fundraising and compartmentalizing of like, if this group, this fundraising group is doing this, to not allow competing fundraisers at the same time would be.
Or competing products, I think is something that we've found, and, um, again, um, we're working through some of those delicate things, um, we're very thankful for our, the local support that we get in our district, and, um, some of our local businesses are part of fundraising, and we wanna make sure we are mindful of that, so, um, we're working through some of these, Brent mentioned, and, uh, that, that's something that Coach Japers and I will work with our people a lot the next year, so we can not fundraise against our kids and fundraise against stuff that's going on in our community.
Good, good thoughts. All right, any more discussion? Hearing none then, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Fundraising request approved. A couple bus bids.
Yeah, hold on, and a little bit more with this too, so we had three, three buses, uh, bus fifteen, Cole Dodds was the high bid, one, uh, one thousand five hundred and one dollars, Dave Erdman was the high bus for number five, two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, uh, we did not have any bids for bus twenty-three.
If these are going to the, to the bus races, I think we should just give them away, cause that was awesome.
Well, I think a few of them are going there, but, uh, so, um, I do recommend the approval of those two high bids, also, I would recommend offering bus number twenty-three, that did not receive an offer to the first come, first served sale, um, after this, and also, uh, the first come, first, first come, first sale for a Ford Fusion. We have Ford Fusion, um, that will not pass DOT inspection, so we can't transport kids with it, um, which is what it's been used for, so, when we get vehicles that are to the point that they can't pass inspection, they had too much rust to pass inspection or something along those lines, so.
Let's say, what is it, we can't fix, rust makes sense?
Their value is, is low at that point.
So do you have a, on those bus twenty-three and that Ford Fusion, do you have a price or is it just?
Or a minimum.
Somebody comes and offers fifty dollars.
When the one does a big bid.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's.
But I think we have some people interested.
Yeah.
All right, I will motion to approve the bus bids as well as the first come, first serve offers.
Twenty-three and.
For twenty-three and the Ford Fusion, as you guys would see fit.
I'll second.
Thank you, we have a motion in a second, uh, any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bus bids and first come, first served approved. Um, all right, uh, handbooks.
Easy handbook here, um, they are, we have the, actually, high school should be no changes also, uh, middle schools, no changes, they're all no changes, and we've had a number of changes in the last few years because, uh, we've had some changes legislatively that we had to make, such as, um, chronic absentee policy last year and bullying, bullying and harassment definitions, but, um, none of those exist this year, um, so there are no changes to any of our handbooks, also to include the classified personnel handbook.
Okay. Out of curiosity, I see a preschool staff handbook and elementary staff handbook.
Yeah.
Why is there not a middle school or high school staff handbook?
Uh, that's, that's required by the statewide volunteer preschool program, that you have those too.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, we need a motion then to approve the, you know, change handbook.
I'd give a motion to approve the handbooks for twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Thank you Tom, do we have?
I'll second.
Who seconded?
I will second.
Thank you Brent, we have a motion in a second, uh, further discussion?
One of the changes in legislation last year was also that every, um, family receives a copy or acknowledges, um, receipt of where it's located electronically, so that's something we gather from all of our families through, um, registration and, uh, open houses and parent-teacher conferences.
All right, uh, any more further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Handbooks approved, uh, got some open enrollments, looks like all out.
All out, and we're past the deadline, um, but we have one family who moved, um, they, they were in our district, and they, they, uh, they were all.
They moved twice, so, I forget which.
They want to come to our district now?
These are out.
They moved to Garner Hayfield, went to school there, but then moved back into our district, still wanna stay with Garner, so, that's.
So they, they, they weren't attending our school last year, then they moved into our district and they're gonna continue to attend school there, and that is one of the, um, reasons that you could accept something after the deadline, so that's one. The other one is a family who has bought a home in the Humboldt School District, but the closing on the home is September fifteenth, so rather than have them start here and move two weeks later, approve it with them.
I will motion to approve the open enrollments.
Thanks Brent, do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks Andrea, we have a motion in a second, any further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Open enrollments approved, uh, approve some resignations.
Two resignations, Lillian Divas, teacher associate at Usha Wallace, and Tiffany Petty, teacher associate at Burd McAffrey.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
I'll second.
Andrea and Brent, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resignations approved, uh, last is approve contracts.
Megan Hamilton, as a volunteer football cheer coach, uh, Mrs. Hamilton was our cheer coach previously, so that will be good help for.
Michelle, right?
Michelle Penny, yeah. Angelo Delgado, teacher associate at Bertha Godfrey, Faith Kaler, teacher associate at Bertha Godfrey, Samantha Hanselman, teacher associate in the middle school, Ashley Lindquist, teacher associate in the middle school, and Holly Ryan, teacher associate in the middle school, and I, we are really close to full for teacher associates, so we feel good about that.
Agree.
I make a motion to approve all contracts.
Thanks Andrea, we have a second. Thanks Todd, we have a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Contracts approved, uh, thank you everyone, uh, also need now a motion for adjournment.
I'll motion this year.
Thanks Brent, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you Andrea, we are adjourned.